We're live. All right, we're going to call this the Burlington City Council meeting together, meeting number four, February 18th, 2020. Would you please all join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathleen, roll call, please.
Graham Murray, here.
Moplin.
Here.
Rinker.
Phillips.
Here.
Kreitzer.
Okay, first, we have a couple of proclamations. Linda, you want to go first?
Yes. This proclamation is near and dear to my heart because my son Harrison is a student at Southeastern Community College, and I worked there for a number of years, so, great school. Your Honor, I have a proclamation, whereas 2020 marks the 100th anniversary of Southeastern Community College, and whereas our city forefathers had the vision of bringing the opportunity of earning a quality higher education to residents right here in our community and making that vision a reality. And whereas since 1920, SCC has helped over 100,000 students achieve their educational goals and make better lives for themselves, for their families, and for their communities by being the go-to provider of an affordable, accessible, relevant college education. SCC has served as a regional leader, building the lives of our residents, supporting our businesses and industries, and strengthening our communities for the past 100 years. And whereas SCC contributes millions of dollars to our regional economy annually, providing high-quality jobs, providing local goods and services, and helping produce talented residents to fill vital positions to all sectors of our economy, including manufacturing, healthcare, and small businesses, and a mirage of service providers. Whereas SCC continues to provide relevant, up-to-date training and learning opportunities for area workers, who in turn enable business and industry throughout the region to complete in the global marketplace. SCC serves as an organization dedicated to uniting the entire region by delivering programs and services that make our communities stronger together through a more educated and skilled citizenry with a shared sense of purpose of the goal of collective prosperity. And whereas many SCC graduates have made advancements in the areas of science, technology, and medicine, achieved athletic greatness, as well as built successful businesses. Others quietly contribute to the betterment of their communities through the quality workmanship, expertise, and care that they provide every day. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of Burlington, Iowa, hereby take great pleasure in congratulating Southeastern Community College, celebrating their 100th anniversary of providing higher education to all the residents of Burlington and our surrounding communities. Signed and sealed this 18th day of February 2020, Honorable John D. Phillips, Mayor. And this goes out to Dr. Ash.
Eric, could you take a photo?
There you are. Congratulations. Want to have a few words?
Well, we're gonna grab some baseline with Dr. Ash. Yeah. Thank you. Would you want to do the word now, or you want to do it after the second one?
We'll do the next one.
Okay. You got it. And the second proclamation, Bill?
I have a proclamation. Whereas February 1st through 29th, 2020, has been designated as Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education. Career and technical education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for true career readiness. Students in career technical education programs participate in work-based learning experiences that improve the quality of their education, increase their engagement and achievement, and enable students to make informed decisions about their career path. And whereas leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasingly challenging related to addressing the skill gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields. Southeastern Community College provides degrees, diplomas, and certificate programs to prepare students for the one of nearly 1,000 unfilled, high-wage, high-demand positions in the local workforce. SCC programs range from welding, agriculture, construction, industrial maintenance, network administration, and cybersecurity; nursing, respiratory therapy, accounting, business, automotive technology, collision repair and restoration; advanced automation, robotics, animation, entrepreneurship, interaction and social media marketing, medical billing and coding, medical assistance, emergency medical services, medical scribe, pharmacy techs, occupational therapy assistance, precision machining, and CNC technology, computer-aided drafting, and nurses' aid. And whereas the career and technical education prepares students for those and for other fulfilling careers by offering integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education and lead to an attainment of industrial-strat-recognized credentials. Career and technical education programs ensure that employers have access to a qualified and thriving workforce, ensuring America is a strong and competitive economy. Career and technical education programs ensure that employers have the access to ensure America is a strong economy. Now, therefore, we, the City of Burlington and the City Council, do hereby proclaim February 1st through the 29th, 2020, as Career and Technical Education Month in Burlington, Iowa, and urge all citizens to become familiar with the services and the benefits offered by the career and technical education programs in this community and to support and participate in these programs to enhance their individual skills and productivity. Signed and sealed this 18th day of February 2020, John D. Phillips, Mayor.
You want to take it down and present it to him? Take his picture, Linda. Yes, sir. The lectern is yours, sir.
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you very much for your consideration for these proclamations. I will tell you that I have not been at the college for 100 years. Some people think I have been, but I have not been. I've completed seven and a half years, which has both flown by and gone very slowly. So it depends on what's happening that day. But I do want to say thank you very much for the acknowledgement of the presence of SCC in our communities. Oftentimes, colleges of this stature are lost in the shuffle of life, and so to take a few moments to say, yeah, here they are. We really appreciate who they are. We will share this with our staff. We have a professional development day on Friday, so I'll be sharing this with them that you all gave this proclamation. And then finally, as it relates to CTE, I would like for you to be aware of the fact that we have on this coming Saturday a STEM festival, and that's where kids and of all ages come, and we fill that place. 1,500 to 2,000 people walking through there, seeing all the different things that students can be involved. And it's a way to ignite their energy and their ways of thinking about the possibilities of a job or a career. And so that'll take place on this Saturday at the campus. I'll invite you to come if it works in your schedule. So, thank you very, very much. On behalf of the college and our Board of Trustees, thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Great work out there. Okay, moving on. This next one, I save for myself. This will be my first Mayor's Award, and it's a doozy. I was contacted by Fire Marshal Crooks, and I have a letter I'm going to read, and then the award. But I was reflecting on this, and it bears, it comes to my mind that heroism comes in many forms, and sometimes it's just a matter of caring enough to act. And this gentleman is going to be honored for that tonight. So, the letter from Fire Marshal Crooks was dated February 3rd, 2020, regarding the house fire at 113 Fleming Court. At 3:56 a.m., Thursday, January 9th, 2020, the Burlington Fire and Police Departments responded to a reported house fire at 113 Fleming Court. It was because of the actions of both the person seen and reporting the fire, as well as the responding police officers, that there was not a fire fatality that day. On the morning of January 9th, 2020, Scott Seasons arrived at work at Applebee's to help unload a supply truck. While waiting in the parking lot for the truck to arrive, Mr. Seasons noted, noticed an orange glow of fire reflecting in some of the house windows to the east of Applebee's. Mr. Seasons chose to go see what was burning, and when he noticed there was a house on fire, he called 911 to report the fire, and he was the first person to report it. Not knowing the address of the street it was on, Mr. Seasons ran to the corner of Fleming and Flint Hills Drive to help dispatchers get a better location to send the responding emergency personnel. Before police arrived, Mr. Seasons located the house and beat on the front door. He could hear someone inside yelling, but couldn't tell exactly what they were saying. Mr. Seasons then kicked in the front door and was met with a lot of black smoke from the fire. Mr. Seasons could then hear someone calling for help, but he could not get to them due to the smoke. Mr. Seasons then tried to keep the man calm by reassuring him the help was on the way and getting closer. Once the police officers arrived, he directed him to where he thought the occupant was located. In my opinion, Mr. Seasons should be commended for his actions in reporting the fire and insisting to find the exact location for the emergency responders. There is no doubt that Mr. Seasons, sorry, actions helped save a life of the occupant that morning. We encourage the public that if they see something, to say something, and that is exactly what Mr. Seasons did. I would like to recommend Mr. Scott Seasons to be recognized at City Council level if at all possible. Signed, Fire Marshal Crooks. And so I have a Mayor's Award for you, Mr. Seasons, and it says, "Be it known, on the behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your heroism and actions are worthy of notice and likely saved a life. We encourage the public that if they see something, to say something. You not only did that, you acted. Despite peril to your own life, you chose to help someone else's life. People like you make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play." February 18th, 2020, this Mayor's Award is presented to Scott Seasons. Would you like to say a few words? You don't have to if you don't want.
I don't like the word heroism.
Would you like to say a few words? Okay, that's fine.
I prefer the word. Name was a Burlingtonian. Wasn't being a hero, I'd be in Burlington. And I'm glad everybody made it out.
Thank you for your actions, Eric, sir. Appreciate it. All right. That was fun. Next on the consent agenda, to the public, all matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, then that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent is finances and miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll, city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarette permits, reports and bonds, resolutions approving the nuisance abatement for various properties. Number two is a resolution approving the refund of liquor license at the Burlington Lodge Number 84, doing business as Burlington Owns Lodge Number 84. Number three is a resolution approving the amendment to the number one, or Amendment Number One, to the agreement between the Flood Mitigation Board and the City of Burlington. Number four is a resolution approving the expanded scope of work from the 2019 HMA resurfacing project. Number five is a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement for the Piper, with Piper Sandler and Company to serve as a dissemination agent for the secondary market disclosure. And then we have a set date for public hearings. Number one is consideration for the sale of properly locally known as 822 Linden Street, Burlington, Iowa. And number two, consideration of the 2020 general obligation corporate purpose in refunding loan agreements in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $16,000. Now, the number two public hearing, 16 million. I did the last two. Just a little difference, 16 million. Number two has been requested to be removed by staff.
Under set date?
Under set date, yes. Can I get a motion? As amended?
I motion to approve.
Do you want to give anyone in the audience?
Oh, on the consent, yes, that's right. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to have a question or any thoughts or concerns? No, seeing none, council?
I motion to approve the consent under Item 1, as amended.
My second.
That work, Kathleen?
Yep.
Okay.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Moplin?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Next up, hearings. Number one is a statement consideration of the sale of Lot 3 at Parkview Subdivision, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisland, please.
Property at Shakkacon Drive, property the city acquired and demolished and then subsequently subdivided. These lots have been for sale, listed for quite some time now. The original suggested price was $30,000. We have received a bid for $25,000 from Johnson Homes to purchase Lot 3 here, the eastern most lot on Shakkacon Drive. The purchaser shall follow and meet all restrictive covenants for the property, which primarily include timing for construction and making sure that it's a single-family home on the property. Construction shall be commenced within 12 months and completed within 24 months of date of purchase of the property. Home shall include a two-car garage and 1,200 square feet of living space. Just intended that if someone does buy a lot, that they actually construct a single-family home on the property in a timely manner and not sit vacant, continue to sit vacant. So, these have been listed, as I mentioned, for quite a number of months, and this is the first bid we've had on the property. Feel it's a great location directly adjacent to Dankworth Park there, but would, staff would recommend based on that bid price to recommend approval of it.
Okay. Any thoughts or concerns from the audience? Seeing none, any from council? All right, can we get a motion to close? Yes.
Do you, at this point, take other potential bids from the audience, or no?
I guess this is somewhat unique. It is less than the original recommended price, so if we wanted to see if there's other bidders on the property, there are two additional lots as well, but...
Typically, when you have this, you go through the process of seeing if there's, not only if there's any concerns or thoughts or objections, but also if there's any other potential offers on the property.
We will ask. Are there any other offers on the property? Did you raise your hand, Leon? All right, I don't see any. Huh? Okay. I don't see any. Can I get a motion to close, please?
I motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen?
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Moplin?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
You gotta read the resolution, Bill.
Resolution approving the sale of Lot 3 of Parkview Subdivision, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second. Kathleen?
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Moplin?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Next up is a statement for the consideration of fiscal year 2021, 2020 to 2021 maximum property for tax dollars for the City of Burlington. Jim? Oh, Stephanie, I didn't, Mrs. Stucker, I didn't see it slip up there on me.
That's okay. Eric put up there the notice that was published in the paper as required. This is a new requirement for approving our budget, so this is listing out certain property tax levies and comparing them to last year. Basically, the levy is going to be the same. The increase, the 1.84 increase is because we've had that amount of increase in our valuation. And then the explanation of the significant changes are listed in that gray box. Basically, we've had, you know, fire and police pension increase and salary increase, and we had that part-time evidence clerk position go to full-time in the next budget. So, this also was posted on our website and on our Facebook page as required by law.
This is a new thing that we have not had to do in the past. This is a new step in the process for doing the budget, and it really is a clarification that the state wanted to make to make sure that folks had a chance to comment ahead of budget approval of changes to the property taxes. The legislature, if you notice by these forums, are not as concerned about the levy rate as they are the actual tax dollars collected. So even though that we're carrying forward the same levy rate, what they are focused on is the actual dollars that are raised from that levy. Other thing to note, this shows the maximum tax rate at the 1206, 707. That is not our overall property tax levy in the budget. It's still the 1634-ish, which is what it was for the current year that we're proposing for next year, but they were focused on a certain set, subset of the different levies that we have.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Stephanie?
No, so that was posted, the Hawkeye, our webpage, and Facebook, three places? Okay, thanks.
So any thoughts or concerns from the audience? Please come up.
Now you can look at me. Leon Shaheen, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. When they did the reassessment, I told people at the time that your property tax levy per thousand was not going to go down. I was right on the money. And other people behind my back say, well, you think you know so much about government finance, why don't you run? Well, pretty much because I don't want my house burned down. I'm going to tell you what's going to happen to my neighborhood with what you're doing here. I went through my neighbors, and by the way, this is public information from the assessor's office. In the neighbors that I looked at, their new assessment is $1,469,000. Their previous, and this is a group of neighbors, and this is not one neighbor, I don't live in that kind of neighborhood. The prior assessment was $1,270,000, $27900. That's an overall increase of 15.6% that people in my neighborhood are going to be seeing because of the reassessment. And then there's some real outliers in that, and I'm not going to mention names because people's private business should be private. But I have a neighbor whose assessment is, has gone up 28%, another 50.5%, another one 33.8%, another one 19.8%, 29.1%, 28.1%, 34.4%, 22%, 21.9%. A lot of these people are on Social Security. Their increase before the Medicare B premiums was 1.6%. A lot of people complain about taxes, but they're not specific about what's driving it. It's your economic development efforts that are driving this. It's a lot of money that you're spending. There's another item on the agenda, and I won't address that in this comment, but just half of what you're spending on economic development, your TIF fund, is about $3 million plus or minus. I don't have the new numbers for the upcoming budget year because you didn't publish them on anything that I could find, so I'm using last year's number. It's 3 million bucks. Now, when you do TIF, only a third of that's really coming out of the city's budget. The other two-thirds comes from the county and the schools. So basically, we're taking money that's supposed to be educating students and using it for economic development, which means my school taxes go up, same way with the county taxes. And to get the, what's coming up on the resolutions, what's happening is you're untaxing new construction, commercial, and business. I looked at some of the assessments for the large employers here. Their assessments have been cut in half. So you're expecting widows and widowers on Social Security to make up the difference. We've driven out of the young folks for two and a half generations because of lousy paying jobs here. This isn't going to end well, folks. This is not going to end well. And I'll comment more as appropriate on the resolution, but you need to get your budget in order. And I'm not attacking firefighters, I'm not attacking policemen. That's what we pay taxes for. But I have a big problem with corporate welfare. You're bankrupting the citizens of this community. You know, in the end, what's, you're burning the candle, literally, it's cliche to say it, but you're burning the candle at both ends. We can't afford to fix up our homes, so our property values actually are declining regardless of what the assessor says, and you're untaxing new construction, business, and commercial, or industrial and commercial. Where are you going to get your revenue from 20 years from now? You're losing population at a rate of 1% per year. Where are you going to get your money from? You're just slowly going bankrupt.
Thank you, Leon. Anybody else, anybody thoughts or concerns? Counsel? Anything? Anything to add, Jim?
One thing I would note, Leon is correct. We are seeing a switch in valuations. I think residential citywide was up about 5%. I haven't looked at this since the valuations, what?
4.8.
4.8. With the residential rollback, effectively, the effective increase is a little bit less than that, more in the... That is with the rollback, 4.8. It was closer to 6 or 7? 7% total, 4.8% after the rollback, but commercial and industrial were pretty close to flat. And if you looked at the multi-residential property part of a tax bill that was passed back in 2013, has seen their taxable valuation go from 100% of value, will eventually, in another couple of years, get down to the same as residential property. And that's been a significant change, redistribution really, of property tax dollars from commercial, industrial, and multifamily housing to residential properties. So there is an impact there. But again, the overall change here is that 1.84% increase with the same levy that was in place before. Distribution is different than it was before.
Anybody else? Anybody else from the audience? Can I get a motion to close, please?
Motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen?
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Moplin?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Okay, resolutions. First resolution, Linda?
There should be a resolution first on that maximum property tax dollars.
Oh, I didn't see that, sorry.
Resolution authorizing a maximum property tax for the fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Second.
Kathleen?
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Moplin?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Next up, resolutions, Linda?
You betcha. Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the final plat of the Wanderick Lake subdivision. I need a second.
Second.
This is a three-lot subdivision located off of Tamer Road, just north of Burlington, in the area highlighted in red there. The previous property lines are shown on the assessor G.I.A. site, somewhat... The previous property lines are shown on the assessor G.I.A. site, somewhat cut through some of the buildings and do not allow proper setback. So this is somewhat of a correction of property lines, ensuring all the properties or buildings are contained within their individual lots. So the three lots there, you can kind of see in the outline former property lines, but this will give adequate lot size to each of those three individual lots. Again, this is in the two-mile area that the city has review on, but it does meet the minimum lot sizes for city regulations.
Any thoughts or concerns from the audience? Counsel? Now, are these three lots, were they owned by the same individuals or different? So they all agreed?
Three separate owners, so they all, to do the plat, they're all listed on the plat here at the bottom here, so they all had to cooperate on the plating.
All right. Is any other questions? Do I need a second on a resolution?
We already received it.
Oh, we already received it, so.
State vote.
Kathleen, please.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Mopin.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Number two resolution, Linda.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving urban revitalization tax exemption pursuant to Chapter 404 of the State Code of Iowa Tax Abatements.
I need a second.
Second.
Sorry.
So this is the annual resolution to approve the people that have applied for tax abatement in the last year. These are due, we send them over to the county so they can be applied to their next tax bill in September, so we need to get them over by the end of the month. So this is the meeting that they're approved at. So you can see in Exhibit A, that's attached to the resolution, we had eight new residential properties apply. We had 15 residential renovations and one commercial business renovation for this year. So this is where the property owners decide how many years they want to take if they want to do the three-year or the 10% sliding scale for the tax abatement. They have any questions?
We don't have any. We covered them in the work session. Is there anybody has thoughts or concerns from the audience?
I warned you, I would.
Don't be bashful.
Once again, Leon Shaheen, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. First of all, I've got a question. In some old work papers I found on this, I found some figures, and they only refer to the city property tax abated. When you do this, do you or do you not abate all property taxes?
That would abate the value from all taxes for new valuation.
Okay, here again, we just talk, and people think I'm making numbers up, and I'm getting closer to the number I talk about all the time. TIF, as I said earlier, was $3 million, something I got from either last year or the prior year. The city's portion of this abatement is $512,000. Since the city is only a third of the property taxes, that means we're talking about $1.5 million in giveaways. And from that alone, you're taking another half a million dollars from the schools. Do you really want to keep doing that? Schools are struggling now. And the next question comes, if these people don't pay their property taxes, who does? Once again, my neighbors and I who've paid taxes often for decades, we're carrying the freight for new construction, for industrial, commercial, you know, when is it going to end? My wife's Social Security check after Part B is $13,000 a year. There's a limit to how much you can take. This isn't working, and it's going to get worse and worse. And I noticed from the number of people building new homes, the number of people applying for abatements is declining. This isn't helping the city.
Thank you, Mr. Shaheen. Any other thoughts and concerns? Counsel? Seeing none, Jim, did you have anything? Okay. Kathleen, please.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Mopin.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Linda, number three, please.
Final resolution, number three. I have a resolution authorizing the application of the Rural Business Development Grant through the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development in the state of Iowa.
I need a second.
Second.
This grant is for community placemaking. Tammy McCoy is here to talk a little further on it, but the city has committed 10,000 local funds through the budget towards the application of this grant program, has secured other contributions, namely $5,000 from the hospital and a private donation of $750 for this. The Rural Development Grant through the USDA is for the Development of Place-Based Economic Development Action Plan for the city of Burlington. It's intended to help communities achieve economic and population growth through cultural and entrepreneurial amenities, concepts, and catalytic projects. Tammy may have some more information on it as well.
Well, we've been working on Tammy McCoy, 918 North Third. We've been working on a small committee, getting creative placemaking into Burlington to revitalize some blighted buildings, to bring new amenities to downtown, and hopefully bring reasons for people to want to stay in Burlington and maybe create new businesses and create things for people to do above and beyond what we already have, and using old buildings as the place to do that. So the goal here is to address challenges and provide a comprehensive strategy engaging the creative placemaking partners when and where their expertise is needed. They work with us to create the amenity. We figure out how to, they figure out how to finance it, and then they help us identify the resources to build and operate. So the scope for the Burlington project will be that we would like to identify all potential buildings and floors of buildings in the downtown Burlington area and work on concepts specific to building revitalization, to create a financial model for capital and ongoing business expenses for each property. We are looking at a city, create a citywide program to combat blighted buildings and create residential housing, determine funding for blighted building program and identify funding resources, create housing incentive programs for artists, entrepreneurs, and young families to move to Burlington, create program to utilize identified buildings and/or building floors for housing, and to determine funding for programs and identify funding resources. On our docket that we are looking at to start with would be the Typewriter Building. We'd like to identify the, some desired facilities, some ideas that we've had, possibly a coding lab, an after-school technological center, maybe a satellite space for area community college, intern living space, artist workspace, locally-owned restaurant or gym. We've had just lots of ideas for that space. They will help us determine who and/or what type of group will take ownership and operate the reuse of this building. Another public plan would be to create public art plan for downtown Burlington. This is something that is already being addressed in the Tiger Grant, but to continue to work on that. So that's where we're at with that, and we're just, this USDA grant will help pay for the services, and which these services will help us find investors and other grants to help pay for these projects. Steve Freevert, do you have more? Steve is working on this with me.
Steve Freevert, Executive Director of Downtown Partners. I think Tammy covered it very well. I would just add that the grant application deadline is swift approaching, so that's why we're putting it in front of you tonight.
Okay. So anybody from the audience have any thoughts or concerns? Anybody from counsel?
I'm excited about this project. Anytime you can take a blighted building and, you know, revitalize it and breathe new fresh air into it and new businesses is a good thing. What was the grant amount for if we were to get it?
I'm thinking $80,000, but I think it's, is it right at $80,000?
Eighty-four, I think.
Eighty, yeah, and then we had to match part of that, which we, I believe we have all the matching funds.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
There are quite a few attachments to this that are grant-related. They're required to actually submit the grant application, so that's why you see Exhibits A through K here are just standard grant requirements for these USDA grants.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns, counsel? All right, Kathleen.
Graham Murray.
Yes, please.
Mopin.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes. And next up is a consideration for the 2020 General Obligation Corporate Purpose and Refunding Loan Agreements in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $16 million. I got that.
I need a second.
Second.
And during this process, we wanted to make sure that we had a chance for Travis Squire from Piper Sandler to address the council and kind of go through some of the steps that we've been taking as we've been working on our overall finances and where this fits within that. And I think you have a PowerPoint to go with that.
I do, thank you. Thanks for the edit to it as well. Whatever, get it fired up. Okay. As you know, this won't be the greatest format because I always try to throw a bunch of numbers on a sheet of paper, which always makes it a little bit difficult. So the first thing I do want to address in terms of the overall amount, $16 million sounds scary until you realize that only about $800,000 is for projects that you haven't already held hearings for, so it's, the rest of that debt is all refinancing. So a lot of that is due to the interest rates, where they are right now, as well as the fact that your, some of your bonds are becoming what we say callable, meaning that they can be paid off without any penalty. So Eric, do you get the second sheet? You want to go ahead and throw that up on the overhead real quick? I figure maybe I'll address that first before I go into the rest of the plan. So this is that second item that deals with the projects and debt for 2019, 2020. So as you know, we held that hearing and did that interim financing this December. Well, Bill, Bill's not aware of that, Bill wasn't yet on the council, but part of the analysis there is with the Water Works doing a project this year in order for the city's debt to qualify as bank-qualified, you did an interim financing that held hearings for 4.85 million for streets and flood protection. The flood protection portion of that will be paid for with TIF. So as you consider the uses of TIF that the city has used over the years, you know, as your citizens have expressed, you know, there's a component of that that goes towards economic development. But as the city has transitioned, you have more and more relied on TIF as an ability to help with your capital planning and keep other costs off the taxes. So the amount of projects and infrastructure needs that you have specifically with some flood protection, if you weren't using TIF financing for that, it would create a greater burden on your citizen's property tax levy rate compared to the way that you're financing it right now, which is appropriate given that it does have a regional economic development for your flood protection project. So to say that all the dollars that are currently being used for TIF or corporate welfare would not be an accurate description of the way that you guys have been using TIF, especially over the last couple of years with your projects. As you look at what is kind of that second section, you can see that there are refundings, Series 2020A, a Series 2020B. Those will be sold about a month from today, so four weeks from now, we'll be completing those refinancings. Currently, I'll go over the estimates on those, but saving a little north of 30% of the remaining interest cost, about $360,000 of total taxpayer savings. The remaining Series C, which will refinance the debt that was sold in December, as well as provide the additional authority of about $800,000, that will be sold at your first meeting in April. So those will be separated by 15 days in order to comply with IRS tax code. So you see it as we kind of work our way down, the new debt right now, anticipated to be issued by the city, is about 15.5 million, which includes the refinancing. We have the hearing set at 16 million. It's a little bit of a contingency, but we do not anticipate using the contingency and will size based on your estimated project costs that are known at the time that we sell the bonds. So we can go back to the main presentation. Any questions on this? This is just kind of a real high level of how we arrived at the hearing amounts before we went any further. Okay? I guess I do have a clicker here, don't I? Okay. So I'm just going to hit the overview, some of the goals that the council's had, we'll hit the current year financing, and then we'll just talk about some of the work that's being done and planning within the debt service levy as well as future tax increment financing projects. So as an overview, council administration previously, you know, has been to review the targets. So in this case, the debt limit margin currently around 70%, which is slightly under your policy goal. And then as of July 1 of 20, you will be at about 59%. Some of that driven by the fact that your margin is a little bit higher due to a higher valuation, as well as the fact that you will have paid off, a lot of your debts, principal payments get paid off on June 1 of each year. So this kind of represents a high watermark as you're issuing the new debt in May as you move forward. So we anticipate that to be around 70 and then drop into about 59 as of July 1. Your debt service levy currently is current at 3.7979. We anticipate the same going forward. You are going to see a note going forward on this current year, which will illustrate a little bit lower levy, and that has to do with the expectation that you are actually receiving some flood mitigation dollars this year that you could apply to the debt. So it's going to show that your levy rate looks at to be 3.59, but that's due to the fact that you didn't have knowledge of those revenues coming in. So ultimately, they'll get applied towards the next project. Some of the goals of the administration are release of the TIF valuation to the general fund, so backing off the amount of collections in TIF. You started this a few years ago, and this was a way to help offset what otherwise would have been tax increases due to very low valuation growth at the city for a couple of years. You had very narrow growth pattern with a couple of years, rate at around 1%, which makes it very difficult to operate in a 2% to 2.5% inflationary environment on cost. So the city did make a move to release some of the TIF, so you're no longer claiming the 100% of the tax increment dollars that are available. Also, has been talked about for many years now, lowering the property tax levy, and it comes down to managing the capital project list and the debt burden. Currently, we're forecasting the levy rate to drop to around 3.40 within the next three years, so that would be a 40% decrease in your taxes. There are some discussions surrounding Cascade Bridge project, which obviously will be talked about over the next couple of months by the council. So depending on the progress of that project, the amount, the desired repayment, the ability to lower it 40 cents, you know, it might only be 30, it might be 25. So that's just going to come down to how you want to manage that project. But a couple of years ago, we kind of set forth, without Cascade Bridge, it looked like you could drop it 40 cents. We're now currently saying that with Cascade Bridge and the certain debt structure, you may still also be able to lower it 40 cents. So those are the current numbers that we're working with, so that's an improvement in the forecast that we're looking at. Okay. So a couple of things on valuations, and you know, one thing to note is that on the far left is, it says actual valuation with utilities. So if you're looking at that number, that number's 1.4 billion here in the city. That is not the amount that folks would pay property taxes on, that's the assessed valuation. From there, rollback rates are applied, so on residential property, it's down to 55% of taxable valuation, rolls through the taxing formula, so that was actually a change this year. One thing that is interesting about valuations is there's very little that you at the city council have any control over. The county assessor sets the valuation, the state sets the rollback formula, the state is the one who determines whether or not there are needs for revaluations of homes, and equalization orders are often issued around the state. So what that has done is there's a market evaluation of where homes are assessed versus where their comparable homes are selling, which often leads to years in which people have spikes in their valuation. So while that's not, you know, certainly not anything that anybody takes lightly, what it often means is that over the last couple of years, they have not been paying property taxes at the rate of their assessed valuation or their market valuation of their home. So that's, those are things that are really outside of your control. The only thing you have is dealing with the valuation growth that you have this year, which is rate at 1.84%. which is rate at 1.84%. You are then charged with setting your budget as a city council, and you use those available dollars to work back into your budget. So you work through your costs, you set your levy rates. And so the ability to then deliver on a no levy rate change on 1.84 valuation growth is really good. Over the last 10 years, you've only averaged about 2.1%. You know, comparable cities of your size certainly outpace you in terms of valuation growth. So your ability to maintain that tax rate is certainly commendable. Down below then is a real, is that summary of that debt limit, those debt limit numbers that we hit. As I mentioned, you're at about 69%, not including rebates right now. That includes the new issues. And then after July 1 of 2020, you can see that you go to the 59% usage. Any questions there before moving on to valuations? Okay. A quick profile of your, of your general obligation debt. This is the part where I was mentioning in fiscal 20, it looks like your levy rate's a little bit lower. But that has to do with the fact that we are seeing flood mitigation dollars come in that were not forecasted at the time of the budget last year. So I do have that in that model, but ultimately, yes, the levy was 3.79 this year. Anticipate it being at 3.79 again as we structure the new debt. One thing you'll note, there's a blue line under 2022. Bill, as a new council member, you may not be aware of this, but city had a debt profile that essentially had what we'd call kind of a cliff, where you had a plateau on your levy rate and then the ability to drop. So the city's been managing their debt burden very carefully over these couple of years, and then obviously see the availability of future property tax relief. So you can see that far right line, the levy rate, without assuming valuation growth, you know, does start ticking down if the city were to not pursue any additional projects. However, the city does have a couple really exciting capital projects with some street infrastructure rebuilds that are going to be necessary. But even with those new projects, which you're going to see in a couple of slides, we are forecasting that levy rate to go down after that plateau year. So the full payments off to the left, 47 million of principal, 8 million of interest, 56 million of total payments. You can see under the abatement, that's where tax increment financing revenues come into play, as well as sewer revenues for a portion of your debt. Other sources of what we call abatement have to do with the flood mitigation dollars that come in. So you can see out of the total debt burden of 56 million of principal and interest, only 22.48 million falls on the debt levy, the rest being paid from other sources. I guess lost is also included in there as well. Any questions there? Okay. Sewer revenue debt, this represents where your debt profile stands right now. You have about 1.8 million dollars of annual payments. As you can see, that debt is largely plateaued out there through 2029. As you begin looking at some of your future projects, one of the things we're looking at is, you know, how do you bridge the gap to getting out to where you have a little bit more capacity? You're obviously still paying for sewer improvements that you've made over the last 20 years. And as you start looking at the next round of projects, currently, we're still estimating that you will be in that 3% rate increase, depending on how projects unfold. However, and that's the big however, is, you know, could there be a play looking at our current bidding environment and the size of the projects, borrowing rates, that you may choose to accelerate some of those payments and debt issues earlier to try to outpace inflationary costs? While doing so may require you to have a slightly higher rate increase in the near term, you would be able to offset it with potentially lower rate increases in the future. So something that you're balancing, you'll see a slide as we come forward. We're not anticipating any moves off of that, but there will just be conversations about, you know, how do you make these projects flow through and work for your community? It might not be as smooth as we'd say, oh, you can just issue, you know, $3 million of debt each year and it works. You know, there might be some chunks of projects. And one of the things we'll be dealing with is just making sure you're in compliance with your debt covenants, which at this time, hopefully, do not require additional rate increases. Another reason why we're looking at, you know, trying to unwind some of that debt burden, keep that levy rate moving down, if you had to give a little bit of property tax support that, on that end of the equation to keep from going to 5% increases for a few years on sewer, that might be something that you consider as how we move that tax burden or overall burden around. But obviously, with your CSO orders and regulatory things, these aren't, it's not like you have choices as to what projects you're going to do. It's just going to be when you're doing them and ultimately what they're going to end up costing. So trying to be as prudent as possible in planning those. As a council, you've been slowly raising rates, where you do have some margin right now to take on some additional debt, as well as you've built up a balance to be able to throw at a few of the projects. Oh, sorry, that slide got small. I meant to make that a little bigger. That does outline the other sources of debt that comprise that 33 million of other sources. You see the flood mitigation dollars right now. That is an intercept that you have been granted by the state that allows you to intercept some of the sales tax increment that has been going. So instead of that 8.9 million dollars going to the state, that money comes back and is being applied towards projects for your flood mitigation program. Total award for the city under that program was 26.2 million. Obviously, another item on your consent agenda was approving a modified repayment schedule. So your other flood mitigation projects, we're hoping to be able to support some of those out of those additional dollars that you'll be receiving. Other questions? Okay. So as we get into the current year proposed financing, the main takeaway here is if you look in the middle of the left page, there's a summary of savings from the refinancing. This is where you see on your Series 2020A, you will be refinancing 2013, 14, and 15-year Series debt that are at rates at 2.25, 3.7, and 2.6 into rates that are around 1.8% on an all-inclusive cost. So that's after financing cost. Ultimately, does result in 268,000 of savings and reducing savings as a percentage of remaining interest cost by 36.8%. So that's refinancing one. Refinancing two, this deals with debt that is taxable. So some of your debt is tax exempt. You have a couple of issues that are taxable purposes. In this case, a smaller amount, you see it's a shorter repayment schedule. So nominal savings is around 100,000. And then you see savings as a percentage of remaining interest cost at 33%. So the number I gave earlier, saving a little bit north of 30% on your remaining interest cost on those debts. So five Series of debt will have the interest rate reduced. Current estimates here are 2.5%, taking to about 1.5% yield on these bonds. So your new 2020C, new capital financing, so this includes the 29, or sorry, 2019D refinancing. So really just two projects here. On the debt service levy portion, that is related to streets. Good news here is you're able to accelerate a lot of your payments here to year one. So it makes your interest rate lower, your overall interest cost. You see making a big down payment essentially on the debt here in year one. The TIF component, slightly delayed in the next three years, but then leveled debt out through 2037. That project is the flood protection at the plant. So a major component of your overall infrastructure, and that will be covered with tax increment financing dollars. So I don't anticipate you being able to read this on the screen. At least on your, on your paper copy, it's a little bit easier. But I'm going to, do I have a, do I have a little flasher on this or not? There we go. Okay. So what we're looking at here, as the city has unveiled a CIP plan, one of the things that we have looked at are a couple of major projects that the city has been considering. In 2020, it's just the streets. Help me on 2021, the street project there. That's... Harrison, yeah. So Harrison Avenue is currently being budgeted as a reconstruct, so 5.7 million. And then lower in the next couple of years, 1 million, 1.2. And then in 2024, we currently have a budget for Cascade Bridge in there at 6 million. When we get out to 2025, there's another major street program, and then settling in at about 2 million dollars of capital per year. All of this assumes that in 2023, we're moving to a $3.40 levy rate. And you can see the remaining dollars here within, you see there's some years that are red, some years that are black. Ultimately, between 2023 and 2030, you have a slight surplus of 113,000 with the 340 levy rate. So what this tells me right now is that you would have the ability, based on the debt structure being proposed, which is Cascade Bridge as a 15-year project. And then once we get past the next five years of capital projects, moving to 10-year debt at the city level as a means to try to lower your overall interest cost that is being paid, which hopefully sets you up in the future to be able to move off of 340 when we get out here in some of these latter years, which I realize are a long ways away. You know, those levy rates could potentially go down then. You could be seeing 325, $3, all while you'll also be backing off your tax increment financing at that point, too. So overall, this is just a real quick snapshot of what's being talked about. Obviously, if we see Cascade Bridge not land up there as a priority project for the council, you could be looking at lowering the levy further than what we have illustrated. In lieu of lowering the levy immediately, the other thing that the city could do would be to unwind some of this debt that has been stretched out 12 years, 13 years, 14 years, and try to get back onto a 10-year level principal repayment. So it might be advisable to still keep the 340 for a few years, even if you do drop Cascade Bridge and try to move some of this debt up. I'm only saying that from a taxpayer interest standpoint, that you would potentially be able to pay less in overall capital cost. There will be another kind of option that I will present at the April meeting, just talking through different ways to think about your capital planning and available dollars. So I'll get some nice pretty charts and then try to show you some things there, too. So this was just more high level, and the goal here is not to set a pattern and adopt these projects officially. The goal here is to make your best one-year decision on your levy rates while keeping the future in mind. And so keeping your levy rate here at 380, at least over the next couple of years, is going to be the prudent approach. Once you get to fiscal '23's budget, which is not that far away, you will certainly have some options, and those will primarily be driven by what capital projects you have on your list. So any questions on this component? Jim, do you have anything you want to add here?
I just mentioned that if you look on the, as you get out to 2026, 27, 28, 29, those are all on his level principal payments each year, 10-year repayment schedules. The earlier years are all stretched farther out. One of the things that we're, that he's done...
14 years primarily, other than the Cascade is 15.
Yeah. One of the things that he's done with moving it down to 340 immediately is sacrificed not getting it paid as quickly as what you could otherwise do. I mean, with the, and this isn't a discussion we have to have an answer on tonight, but doing a project of that size, well, between Harrison Street, Cascade, and then Sunnyside, all three major projects, doing those three so quick together, it's kind of hard to, I'd have a hard time justifying going down to 340 so quickly. Rather try to scrunch the repayments up a little bit. But, I mean, it's not one that we have to have an answer on tonight, and it's one that, as we move forward, we'll have some discussions on.
Yep. Okay. The tax increment financing revenues, again, just kind of giving a big picture here. Right now, there are approximately $30 million of projects slated over the next 10 years. Those projects include the flood protection, Washington Street, Market Force, the CSO. So that's a sewer supporting project. There's flood protection at the plant, once again, another sewer support project. There's flood protection just in general to help offset some of the dollars that will be received through the flood mitigation program, about $1 million there. And we're currently slating a sizable chunk out there at that 10-year mark. Again, some of this might be lumpy depending on how your projects, but we're looking at about $13 million of potential projects to help offset sewer rate increases. So that's the current slate for new tax increment financing projects. As you can see, a lot of, you know, really exciting, exciting economic development. So in this case, helping with the other purpose of TIF, which really is help, is to help relieve what is commonly called, you know, slum and blight remediation projects. In these cases, slum and blight is really a term for just infrastructure improvements. In your case, bringing some of these infrastructure projects up to speed, while, you know, that definition certainly, you know, sounds big and scary. You know, ultimately, these are things that will help your overall citizens in terms of projects and helps keep future rate increases off. I mean, these, the support here on the sewer is roughly 850,000, or sorry, it's a little over $900,000 per year that's currently being budgeted. And that amount alone, you know, represents what would be about 50% of your current sewer debt payments. So it's a sizable help in keeping sewer rates manageable into the future. Any questions on the, Jim? Okay. That's my favorite slide, right? We're still processing the sewer stuff. I kind of gave you an overview right now. We do think, you know, 3% is reasonable depending on how we're able to unfold those projects. But I encourage you to think about cost inflation on those projects and, you know, the desire to move forward more quickly. And if there's creative ways to get that done, you know, certainly, I don't want you, you know, hanging out, you know, increasing rates 3% to fund a project five years from now while construction inflation's going at 8. You know, the math doesn't work in your favor on projects that way. But certainly being, you know, timely on these projects, there's also just limitations. You know, you have a massive order from the EPA on improvements here. And so from the standpoint of how quickly can you even process those projects, you know, they're going to be big lifts for your community. But certainly, doing the best you can to make it manageable. There's been a lot of good planning going on at the administration level. So looking forward to kind of the next conversation on that. All right. All right. A lot to digest there. You know, what nuggets should you hold on to? Not a lot has really changed from, from last year's plan. The primary driver that we would say is that interest rates have remained lower. It's allowed you to potentially accelerate some major capital projects. You can see that, you know, Harrison Street was a project on the CIP. Certainly looked now like it could be a more major reconstruct. Same with Sunnyside, again, was on the CIP loosely, but now looks like potentially it could be a reconstruct that gives more life to that project as opposed to, you know, a 10-year overlay, and we're going to do a 10-year overlay again. So it does help extend the life of your overall capital plant as a city. I know you don't think of your city as having a capital plant, but you really do to an extent. Are there items that are going to need further understanding? You know, I think that's just going to be, you know, as I feel sorry for Bill, you know, first coming, it's like just drinking from a fire hose here, right? First time you're seeing this. And everybody goes through that, you know. Once you hear it three or four times, right? Right, Linda? It starts to get a little bit easier.
I'm still drinking from the fire hose some days.
Yeah, it's still fire hose some days. You know, ultimately, we'll do our best to bring succinct information. This was a lot of big numbers. I'll get some more summaries out as we get into April, kind of at your final approval. And other specific questions that need to be addressed, you know, in terms of, as you guys think about that, you know, as we go into March and April, be thinking about if there's another scenario that you want to see. You know, filter that through Jim. And then when we kind of present this again, hopefully at the April meeting, we'll be able to perhaps be a little bit, you know... at the April meeting, we'll be able to perhaps be a little bit, you know, here's one option, here's a second option for looking at these. You know, right now, it's just, Jim and Travis got together, this is the option we like right now, and we'll ultimately be able to help council drive decisions and options. We want you to be informed on that, so. Otherwise, I think we just got my mugshot in our disclosures, and I guess I'll turn it over. So, Jim, anything else?
Yeah, again, I just, I pulled this, or wanted you to pull this and have it, the set date as a separate discussion, just so you could get, this is a little bit larger concept than what the hearing is about, but to be able to make sure that we had an understanding in the context of some of the backdrop behind this specific item.
It'd normally be a work session, but I had been, I had other commitments on the other Mondays, so I appreciate it.
Let him go to his kid's ballgame.
I got to go to one of my son's ballgames.
All right, did he win?
That night, he did, because like, the next week, I was missing three of them with travel all around the state, so it was, I really appreciated Jim giving me that night, and council, you didn't know you gave me in the past, but I thank you as well. So other, other questions?
I don't have any. Anybody in the audience have any questions? Ms. Shan?
Leon Shaheen, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. There's a lot of numbers to digest there, and I can't read with my vision issues. One question that comes up on Cascade Bridge, what is that going to do to the debt service levy if you take that out?
We talked, Travis, I think, when we talked about Cascade Bridge, in and of itself as a, if you're doing like a $5 million project, is a 25 cent in that neighborhood? Impact on a levy?
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I think part, and part of the answer, though, too, is, we're not necessarily just an offset on levies discussion with it, it's, it's a matter of how much infrastructure can we afford? We've got so many infrastructure needs, and we're always prioritizing, and when you move one up, it just necessarily means you're moving everything else back. So that's, that's part of the discussion that's there, too. It's not just the 25 cents, but yes, that's part of it.
Anybody else have any thoughts or concerns? Counsel? Kathleen?
Graham Murray. Aye. Moplin?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye. All right, we've reached that point of the night where we can entertain some additional comments from the audience. Please bear in mind, we want to hear your thoughts and concerns, but we may not be able to address it if it's not on the agenda. Anybody have any thoughts or concerns? I see none. Staff, Don, you have anything? We've got another half hour or so. Rhonda? No. Chief? Stephanie? Eric? Jim? We were prison along.
We were. Descom, Descom meeting is on Thursday, 2:00, West Burlington. Citizens Academy begins this Thursday, 5:30, goes for the next 10 weeks, eight weeks?
Nine weeks.
Nine weeks, whatever, can almost get it. There is a Cascade Bridge survey out there. We've gotten, I think, 400 some responses so far on that. If you go, do encourage folks to go onto the city's webpage, on the front page, there is a link to the survey, and just encourage more responses. We have that open through March first, so the more responses we get back there, the better off we are. One of the things that we've asked for in there is addresses, try to get a little bit of demographic information, so we have an idea, are we seeing a truly representative thing from Burlington residents? We'll have data that's both Burlington residents and non-Burlington residents, and somewhat of a distribution around town to give an idea, is this something that, there's a clear difference in responses for one area of town versus the community as a whole? But that'll be part of the, as Impact 7G eventually comes back and kind of gives their next update, that that will be a component of what they'll be presenting. So again, the more people who make sure that they get their responses in there, the better. And that was it for what I had.
Okay. Mr. Moplin?
I'm good.
Linda, you have anything?
Did you guys want to share anything from legislative days?
Well, it was just me, Matt, men in Costa Rica, so. Actually, it's my first experience, it was, it wasn't good as far as being able to discuss some items with the senators and reps, and it was really impressive to listen to some of the area youth address, address some of their concerns to the reps and senators, and in particular, a couple of the Notre Dame kids, and I'm there now, I paid real attention to them, they lit it on fire, so they did great, so. It was a good, good event, so. Other than that, I don't have anything, so. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second. We both got there.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Moplin?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye, we stand adjourned.